Good morning and welcome back to the Lord's house this morning on the Lord's day. Oh, it's been such a great weekend. I take this opportunity to thank all of you for coming. And I know it took a lot of effort to come and to stay and to be here for these meetings, but God has blessed us mightily for our efforts and we thank the Lord for that. But I would encourage you, this is just the beginning. I think sometimes we think, well, I'm gonna go to camp meeting and I'm gonna seek the Lord and I need my baptism. And we don't get to the place where the Lord fills us and we go home and go, well, maybe next year. Oh, Lord, help us. You're closer now than you were on Friday. Keep pressing on. As much as we would love for you to get your baptism, your deeper experiences right here this morning, and God can do it. You know what a booster it'll be for your home church? God bless you. God bless you. Let's keep pressing on. The Lord is coming soon. We were reminded of that last night. So God bless each one of you. We pray for safe travels today as you travel home and... No, okay. So I've been handed a note. Apparently there's a black Jaguar SUV with Illinois Diller plate that is sitting on the street. I would... Well, you need to move it. The county will probably come by and you'll have to go looking for your car. And I'm sure they'll, you know, charge you a nice fee for moving it for you. So if that's your car, please do go move it up onto the lot someplace this morning so nothing happens to it. Amen. We're looking forward to what the Lord has for us today. So Brother Shola does plan to preach for us here in a little while. We look forward to hearing from him, what the Lord has for us. And following Brother Shola's sermon this morning, we will have a rededicatory prayer, rededicating this place back to the Lord and His work. And following that, we will have a time of prayer. So following the rededicatory prayers, please feel free to just come to the altars and seek the Lord. The Lord's not done. He's not done. He has more for us today. God bless each one of you. Brother Rodney's gonna lead us to some songs of worship.
Revive us again, right? We'll start with that. 302, 302. Revive us again. We want to leave this place revived and refreshed today. We want to go back to our home church and brighten the corner where we're at. If we could, as we sing the fourth chorus, let's do it a cappella as one grand choir, okay? All four verses.
Revive his heart with thy love. May his soul be rekindled with fire from above.
Amen. Revive your church, Lord. 475, 475. Easter is two weeks away. But you know, we serve a risen Savior. He's in the world today. He lives. And we're thankful that He is alive today. Let's sing all three verses, 475. Thankful the Lord lives in my heart today. How about you? 511, 511. Let Him have His way with thee. I love the chorus. His power can make you what you ought to be. His blood can cleanse your heart and make you free. His love can fill your soul and you will see 'twas best for Him to have His way with thee. Let's sing all three verses, 511. Just give in. Let the Lord have His way with you this morning. And I guarantee you, you'll be blessed. 312, 312. The way of the cross leads home. That's where we're heading today, aren't we? We're on our way home. Let's sing all three verses, 312. 549, 549. My Savior first of all. Just imagine your first moments in heaven. And the first person you see is Jesus, the one who died for you. Oh, what a day that's gonna be. Let's sing verses 1, 2, and 4. 1, 2, and 4 will omit the third verse.
Amen.
111 will be our song before prayer. 111, "He hideth my soul in the cleft of the rock."
Yes.
What a beautiful place to be.
Yes, amen.
But I want you to think a moment for the, on this fourth verse, it says, "When clothed in His brightness, transported I rise to meet Him in clouds of the sky."
What a day.
His perfect salvation, His wonderful love, I'll shout with the millions on high.
Right, amen.
Oh, won't that be glorious. We're gonna sing verses 1, 3, and 4, and we'll stand on the fourth verse and remain standing for prayer. 911, 911.
And so before we look to the Lord in preparation, I'd like to sing one more song. Back in 1994, a group of St. Louis Saints stood on this spot and saying, "We are standing on holy ground." And they broke ground on this building. And here we are today, back in this building. So I want to sing that through a couple times, and then we'll ask Brother Bob to lead us in prayer. We are standing in His presence on holy ground. Thank you, Jesus.
Heavenly Father, we love you, Lord.
Yes, Lord.
We just thank you for your presence. We've failed in this place.
Yes, Lord, Jesus.
We're truly standing on holy ground this morning, Lord.
Oh, yes, Lord.
This holy ground that you've given to us, Lord, we just praise you. We thank you, Lord.
Yes.
We thank you for this weekend that we've had, your presence has been here. We thank you for the prayers that have been prayed, the answers to prayer that went up, Lord. We just praise you and we thank you, Lord.
Yes, Lord.
And oh, as we go through this service this morning, just continue to bless.
Oh, yes.
Just let your Spirit flow, Lord. Touch each life.
Yes, Lord.
Stir each soul.
Yes, Lord.
We just want our hearts to be open to you, Lord.
Yes, Lord.
We're looking to you, to just draw closer to you, Lord. We just want, remember this weekend.
Yes, Lord.
You should Terry, Lord, what you've done for each one that was here this weekend, Lord. And oh, as Jeff already mentioned, as we go back home to our home churches, Lord, we just want to continue to seek you.
Yes, Lord.
Continue to draw closer to you, Lord.
Yes, Lord.
We know you're coming soon. All we have to do is look around the world.
That's right.
See what's happening, Lord.
Yes, Lord.
How this whole world has turned against Israel, Lord. That's all prophesied in your word, that...
Yes, Lord.
It's just some of the signs, that you're coming soon, we know that.
Yes.
We're looking forward to that day.
Yes, Lord.
As Scripture says, we'll be caught up.
Yes. Amen. Amen, Lord. Praise the Lord.
To meet you in the air, oh, Lord. That's a day we're looking forward to.
Yes, Lord. Thank you.
If there's one here that doesn't have that hope this morning.
Oh, Lord, Jesus.
That they'll pray right now.
Take to their hearts, Lord, even right now, Jesus.
Jesus is coming, you've gotta be ready.
Yes, Lord.
Oh, Lord, we just thank you for what you've done. Thank you for what you're gonna do right here this morning, till the lights are turned out today, Lord. We're just looking for an outpouring of your Spirit.
Yeah.
That you'll save, you'll sanctify, you'll fill with your Holy Spirit.
Yeah.
The ones that need a healing touch, other needs, Lord, you're here to answer every need.
That's right, Lord.
Every prayer request. We just thank you in advance for each answer. Just continue to bless. Bless your word. Bless Brother Shola this morning, Lord.
Yes, Lord.
Just open our hearts and receive your word, and all together around the altar of prayer and throughout this beautiful sanctuary. Just come down one more time.
Yes.
We just ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Time is filled with swift transition. Not of earth unmov'd can stand. Build your hopes on things eternal. Hold to God's unchanging hand. Hold to His hand, to God's unchanging hand. Hold to His hand, to God's unchanging hand. Build your hopes on things eternal. Hold to God's unchanging hand. Trust in Him who will not leave you whatsoever years may bring. If by earthly friends forsaken, still more closely to Him cling. Hold to His hand, to God's unchanging hand. You gotta hold to His hand, to God's unchanging hand. Build your hopes on things eternal. Hold to God's unchanging hand. Cover it not the world's riches that so rapidly decay. Seek to gain the heavenly. They will never pass away. You've got to hold to God's unchanging hand. Hold to God's unchanging hand. Build your hopes on things eternal. Hold to God's unchanging hand. When your journey here's completed. Here to God you have been true. Fair and bright, home in glory. Your in rapture, so will you.
Amen to that, amen.
Everybody help us.
Hold to His hand, to God's unchanging hand. Hold to His hand, to God's unchanging hand. Build your hopes on things eternal. Hold to God's unchanging hand.
One more time on that chorus.
Hold to His hand, to God's unchanging hand. Hold to His hand, to God's unchanging hand. Build your hopes on things eternal. Hold to God's unchanging hand. You gotta build your hopes on things eternal. Just hold to God's unchanging hand.
From 2 Chronicles, chapter 6. 2 Chronicles, chapter 6, we'll read verses 40 through 42, and then continue on into chapter 7, reading the first three verses. Beginning at 2 Chronicles, chapter 6, beginning with verse 40. "Now, my God, let I beseech thee, thine eyes be open; let thine ears be attentive to the prayer that is made in this place. Now therefore arise, O Lord God, into the resting place, thou in the ark of thy strength. Let thy priests, O Lord God, be clothed with salvation, and let thy saints rejoice in goodness. O Lord God, turn not away the face of thine anointed; remember the mercies of David, thy servant." Beginning of, uh, chapter 7. "Now when Solomon had made an end to praying, the fire came down from heaven and consumed the burnt offering and the sacrifices, and the glory of the Lord filled the house. And the priests could not enter into the house of the Lord, because the glory of the Lord had filled the Lord's house. And when all the children of Israel saw how the fire came down and the glory of the Lord upon the house, they bowed themselves with their faces to the ground upon the pavement and worshiped, and praised the Lord, saying, 'For he is good; for his mercy endureth forever.'" for his mercy endureth forever."
We thank God for the cross.
Yes.
Take a text this morning. Reading from 2 Chronicles, Chapter 6. 2 Chronicles, Chapter 6, verses twenty and twenty-one. Twenty. "That thine eyes may be open upon this house day and night. Upon the place whereof thou hast said that thou wouldst put thy name there, to acting unto the prayer which thy servant prayed toward this place." Twenty-one. "Acting therefore unto thy supplications of thy servants and of thy people Israel, we they shall make toward this place, hear thou from thy dwelling place, even from the heaven; and when thou hearest, forgive." First, I want to thank God for the privilege that God has given to you and I to be here with the precious saints in the Midwest and specifically in St. Louis today. Thanks to Brother Jeff for inviting us to be here. When he told me that my good friend, Brother Pete, would be here, I said, "I would only come here to come and say, 'Amen,'" and back him off. But he said, "I should bring the message, the word of the Lord this morning." It's a privilege. We bring you greetings on behalf of the Board of Directors and the saints at the Headquarters Church in Portland, Oregon. We thank God for the miracle. The miracle of the house in which we are all seated this morning. This is a miracle. This is an answer to prayers. And before I even go too far, if the Lord can recover this for his church. If the devil has taken anything away from you. By the grace of God, this is a money of recovery. You know, God told David, Zealot, he said, "Pursue." You will recover. I don't know what the devil may have taken from you. Your salvation, your sanctification, your baptism, your health. Your health. Your future, your career, whatever they may be. Recovery money. The money of recovery. Glory be to God. And don't you see what the Lord did for us here? I came from Madison, the Schleicher's, they brought me, Brother Charles. I think I was in your vehicle that day you drove many of us. We came twenty-four years ago. We came here and I prayed some prayers around this place. I still remember all of those prayers. They were answered. Great God of heaven. The money, don't rush out this morning. All the prayers that you and I will pray in this place, this very day, the Lord will hear. He will answer. September 3, 1995, Brother Dwight Bosell stood in this same place and on behalf of the church dedicated these same church buildings in St. Louis. As I said, Tolu and I had the privilege of attending special meetings here a few times before we left the Midwest. We were blessed. But due to situations beyond our control as a church, we had to sell this church building a few years ago. Nobody was happy. I will tell you, Brother Daryl specifically told me, Brother Bob echoed it, it was not the interest of the church to sell this. But it had to be sold, but they were praying. Brother Bob, Brother Daryl, all of you. The saints in St. Louis, they were praying. The saints all over the Midwest, they were praying. "Lord, give us a church building in St. Louis." And I will read the history of the work in St. Louis shortly. You will see how St. Louis is very central to the apostolic faith work in the Midwest. They were praying. And we sit here this morning. We have come all the way from Portland to rejoice with you. God has answered your prayers. Brother Jeff will tell you details about how God acquired, repossessed this place for us. What a miracle. What this place, what God, what we bought this place for back. Far less than what they bought it from us. Our God is a great God. I said, "This is a money of recovery." This is a money of answers to prayers. You know, I don't want to take a lot of time before declaring this place, we re-dedicate this house as an apostolic faith church. I don't usually, when I go to dedication, that comes last. But no, 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 no. This morning, let's repossess. Quickly, by the grace of God, we re-dedicate this house as an apostolic faith church. We re-dedicate this house. This house will never be sold again. This house, this same house, the house of God. God will do miracles in this house. When people come all the way from the Midwest, they will be looking forward to Midwest meeting. Because God will do wonders in this house. You know, you may wonder, what does that mean, an apostolic faith? It means the same faith. The same doctrines, the same practices of the apostles, which they preach, by the grace of God, will be preached here, will be taught here, will be lived here. In apostolic faith churches all over the world, we have the same doctrines. You walk into any apostolic faith church, we have the same doctrines. Some people say that doctrines divide. No, 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 we, sir. Give me a break. Doctrines unite. Doctrines bring us together. You know, Brother Ted Friesen wrote a song, "Together, Together, Together." If I go to what today? If I go to Van Buren? If I go to Madison? I go to Minneapolis? I go to Richland Center? I go to Milwaukee? I go to Tennessee? Same doctrine that is preached in Portland. What will be preached in Portland this morning? You can tune it, tune it to wherever you like, Africa, Asia. You will hear the same doctrine, the same word of God. So we dedicate this house as an apostolic faith church. You know, when you fly Delta Airlines, I flew Delta here. When I entered the plane, there are some signatures, cultures of Delta. It does not change. You see their uniform is the same. You see those planes, the logo is the same. St. Louis Church. This same building will live the same doctrines. Will preach the same doctrines as all the rest of apostolic faith churches. You know, they call it, they define it as organizational identity and culture. It's very important. An organization is bigger than an individual. You know, an organization, we do not shift goalposts here to feed. I strive to attain to what God wants. This is the apostolic faith church. There are standards. Those standards will be preached here. Those doctrines will be preached here. Salvation. Sanctification. Baptism of the Holy Ghost. Divine healing. Restitution. Divine Trinity. Second coming of Jesus Christ. The tribulation. Christ's millennia reign. The great white throne judgment. The new heaven and the new earth. Eternal heaven and eternal hell. Marriage is for life. By the grace of God, will be preached here. We will not say, "It is okay, you can patch it here and there, no way." By the grace of God, the Lord may patch it. We will not patch it. Even if God calls us to higher heights and deeper depths. By the grace of God, we will go with God. This is an apostolic faith church. It's an apostolic faith church. It is not a new gospel. Not a cultural or contemporary idea. It will not be preached here, but the same doctrines. The same doctrine. You know, Paul preached that to the titles. Preached that the things would become the same doctrines. By the grace of God, they will be preached here. Isaiah 55:11 says, "So shall my word be that God hath fought out of my mouth; it shall not return unto me void; but it shall accomplish that which I please, and it shall prosper in the thing whereunto I sent it." The word that will come behind this pulpit will accomplish great things. You know, the word of God has life of its own. You don't have to beautify it, it's already beautified. You don't have to try to garnish it, it's already powerful. The word of God that is quick and powerful, continuing to the dividing and son of the soul and the spirit, the discernment of the thoughts and the intent of the heart. When sinners come, the word of God, we begin to reason with them. No sinner will come here and go the way they came. The Lord will arrest them. We dedicate this house as a house of prayer. A house of prayer. You know, Jesus said, "My house shall be called the house of prayer." We will not turn this house to a coffee house. We will not turn this house to a tea house. You know, if we are not careful, the devil will slip in. He'll say, "It's okay, let's bring coffee in, let's bring tea in, let's bring biscuits, let's bring crackers." And before you know it, no way. By the grace of God, this house will be a house of prayer. People will come here and cry unto God, and the Lord will hear from heaven. You know, in 2 Chronicles, Chapter 6. 2 Chronicles, Chapter 6, in Chapter 5, there were some preparations that were made for the dedication of the temple, Solomon's temple. And then in Chapter 6, it really details the account of Solomon just giving those beautiful prayers. Beautiful prayers. And then Chapter 7, end of 6 and 7, which Brother Jeff read for us in scripture reading, they were the results of those prayers. And in Chapter 6, 2 Chronicles, Chapter 6, the word pray appears sixteen times in that chapter alone. Solomon did not just counsel or talk about prayer. He actually demonstrated it. He actually prayed. And sixteen times, he used the word pray. We'll read some of those this morning. He said that this house, in this house, when prayers are prayed about forgiveness of sin. You can read that in 2 Chronicles, Chapter 6, verses thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-nine. It says, "If they sin against thee, and thou be angry," and then it goes, "yet if they bethink themselves in the land whither they are carried captive, and turn and pray unto thee." And turn and pray unto thee in the land of their captivity, saying, we have sinned, we have done amiss and have dealt wickedly. Thirty-nine, then thou shalt hear from heavens, even from thy dwelling place, their prayer. And forgive thy people. In fact, he prayed that prayer even to the point that when people come here, they hear the word of God. They might go out, that word will not leave them. That word will continue to go with them. You know, that was what happened to me. Spring of nineteen eighty-four, I was raised in this gospel, brought up to church, taught the word of God. Spring of nineteen, but I loved soccer more than God. I love dirt, I love coming to church, but when there was a clash with sports, I would go for sports. And one Wednesday, rather than go to Bible study, I was at Liberty Stadium in Ibada nineteen eighty-four. I got there, there was no money on me, but I saw a tall tree. And I said, oh, I'm a Sunday school boy, Zacharias climbed the tall tree to see Jesus. Let me climb the tall tree to watch this soccer match. Levantis United versus Shooting Stars. You know, some of you from Nigeria, you understand. I mean, I climbed that tall tree, I was watching the match, but the word that I had in the church. The spirit of God began to follow me. On the top of that tree, the spirit of God came and said, if you fall down here and die. Where will you spend eternity? Young man, young woman, elderly man, elderly woman, if you are not saved, you are, you are treading on a dangerous ground. And if you live here, you think I'm free, I'm not going to come again, you only need to come once. You know, when you come once, the spirit of God will hook you. We declare this morning that there will be a hook here, there will be a hook here. The word of God will hook sinners, they will come and be saved. Ah, the spirit of God, I could not enjoy that soccer match. You know, God will send conviction, the word of God will come with power, the word of God will come with grace. That conviction is a good conviction. Until you come to the knowledge of Christ and you say, Lord, I surrender home. I climbed down from that tall tree. You people ask, ah, ah, why did I, I asked myself rather, why did I not pray on the top of that tree? What if I fell down? I carefully came down, I still love that match was intense, I love my Levantis United, but the conviction was there. I came down very quietly, did a poor, poor sinner tread back home. And when I got home, I could not pray, dedicate, eh, eh, garnish prayer. It was not a decorated prayer, but it was a sinner's prayer. All I said was, Lord, be merciful unto me, a sinner, a sinner. Oh, one joy came down. The word that people will hear from this place, the word of God, the word of life will follow them home. Will follow them to school, will follow them to work, that word will do great things. It will cause forgiveness, forgiveness. So we dedicate this house today as a soul-saving station. A soul-saving station. It will be a station, souls will be repaired, lives will be put together, marriages will be put together. Homes will be put together, the love of God will reign. He also prayed prayer of deliverance from enemy. Second Chronicles six twenty-four to twenty-five, if thy people Israel be put to the walls before the enemy. Because they have sinned against thee and they shall return and confess thy name and pray and make supplication before thee in this house. In this house, twenty-five, then hear that from the heavens and forgive the sin of thy people. Deliverance, deliverance from enemy, talks about prayer that God will send rain, provision for the people. When people lack, there was a prayer request in the prayer room this morning. Many of our young people, some of our people, they are dealing with immigration problem. When we were in the UK, in fact, we were told that back in the late seventies and eighties in the UK. Ninety-five percent of prayer requests was, God, give, give our people papers to stay in the country. It's important because we want them to spread the gospel. God answered our prayer. Today in the UK, have you been there? Go see their committee, it was impactful. In fact, many, many were turned away last year, they could not stay on the campground because God answers prayers. When there's a need, when people, when, when, when there's farming in the land, when there are problems and people come here. And pray, God will hear, the prayer that you will pray this morning, God will hear, God will answer. Since second Chronicles six forty says, now my God, let I beseech thee, thy eyes be open. And I hear be attent unto the prayer that is made in this place. And by three, we dedicate this house as a house of refuge. A house of protection. House of refuge. You know, in the Old Testament, God established the cities of refuge. There were six of them that were strategically positioned in the Levitical towns in Israel and Judah. And if a perpetrator falls, fails to run into that city of refuge rather, the Avenger of Blood will catch him. But if the perpetrator will run into the city of refuge and be locked in, I loved that last night. Locked in, when they are locked in here and they pray prayers, he said, God will hear. This will be a city of refuge. So we dedicate this house as a city of refuge. You know, in Pullman, we did not even have a place like this, but we have a church, uh, we have a place dedicated as a church where we rent. And sometimes when I go in the morning, in the afternoon, I see people, our people, the God people. I see them, they come, they open the door, they just go to the altar there. We are so blessed, we use the same altar that was used at fifth and bonsai. It's still the same altar, they sleep their head under and they weep. Ah, I have never seen one unanswered prayers in that church. Even if a place that is not our home, not to talk of a place dedicated, the building dedicated as an apostolic faith church. It will be a city of refuge. When life will beat people down, if they run into this place, God will deliver them. You know, Psalm one twenty-two one says, I was glad when they said unto me, let us go into the house of the Lord. This will be a house of gladness. I was glad when they said to me, let us go into the house of the Lord. This will not be a place where children will say, no, daddy, mommy, I don't want to go to church, there's no love there. There will be love here. There will be love here. You know, I always say that life beats us down. It beats us down on Monday, it beats us down on Tuesday, life beats us on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. When people come to the house of the Lord on Sunday or whenever the church is open. This is not a beat down gospel, this is a lift of gospel. God will lift you up, when you come here, God will lift you up. When you have problems, God will lift you up. Oh, you have joy and gladness in this house. There will be no disunity. The devil will not have a chance here. We will not beat ourselves down, we will not talk ill of ourselves. In this church, we say, even when somebody comes and says, oh, this brother did this, ah, it's a brother, let's pray for him. It's a sister, let's pray for him. The devil will not have a chance here. The Lord will war, there will be unity, there will be unity. You know, unity is not uniformity. Uniformity, I like to, I can walk to two, three, four AM, okay? But I don't like waking up at seven. Or six, give me my money, I'm not a morning person, so to say. They are getting to know that the headquarters office now. And I bring my bag in at eleven. This guy. Brother Daryl is a morning person, five AM, Brother Daryl is awake, five thirty, he's already working. But he's in bed early, so we walk, my wife likes tea, she's a, she's a British lady. I like my coffee. I'm from the West Coast now, I love Starbucks, okay? We can love different things, let's not bring them here, let's not bring politics here. Let's not bring politics here, there's no one like Republican or Democrat, God bless them. We pray for them, the Bible in just, we pray for our leaders, we pray for our country, but this is not a house of politics. This is the house of God. You know, I tell people, the thing that brings us together is more than the little differences. That the devil wants to use to separate us. Get on the Lord's side, I implore you, get on the Lord's side. This place will be a house of unity. This house will be a house of refuge, we will not tear ourselves down, we will build ourselves up and God will build us up. We rededicate this house as a solution center. Let me say it again, we rededicate this house as a solution center. That is a house where God will provide solutions to all of life's problems. Solutions, solutions in this house. You ask for anything, God will do it. You know, Hannah, there was a time she had problem. Hannah was beaten down by life too. But Hannah did not say, oh, this uh, uh, problem, uh, let me go and consult counselors. They could not help her, maybe she did, for the Bible talked about the woman with the issue of blood. How many physicians did he, uh, did she consult? And I'm not, I have nothing against physicians, they have their place, I go for my annual physical, but in this house. When you have sickness and you come here and you pray and the people of God said, is any among you sick? Let him come to the elders of the church, let him anoint him with oil and pray in the name of the Lord. The prayer of faith will do miracles in this house, though will heal the sick. Like Hannah did when people like Hannah come here, oh, God will do miracles. God will fine tune their womb, he will work on their wombs. God will deliver them safely. Did God not do that for Hannah? I love it, first somewhere one, uh, seven to nine and eleven, and they say, and as he did so year by year. Don't stop coming, year by year, Wednesday by Wednesday, Sunday by Sunday. When she went up to the house of the Lord. That is, let this be your solution center. Run to Jesus, if you can get to the house of the Lord, of course, if you are in danger or problem, call on Jesus. He will be there for you, but if you can get here, we rededicate this house as a solution center. God answered the prayer of Hannah. There was a time Ezekiel also had problems. Second Kings, chapter nine, verses fourteen, sixteen and nineteen, I will just read a few in closing. And Ezekiel received the letter of the hand of the messenger and read it. And Ezekiel went up into the house of the Lord and spread it before the Lord. You know, when they, when people come here, they spread the letters, they spread their problems. Hey, I was a full-time professor before and um. It was a time we needed to write a grant, three million dollars and people there, they were wondering, what do we do? There was a man who said, ah, that Shola, go to him, let him pray on this grant. I took the grant proposal, I brought it to church, it was in an envelope. People did not know, I just placed it under the altar and began to with God. Let your grace, let your mercy, let your goodness go with this grant. One time, one submission, it was funded. There was nothing, in fact, they always joke that Shola, if you any grant that Shola on, they always had like ninety percent acceptance rate. The federal acceptance rate is about ten to fifteen percent. But because you are a child of God, the people you work with, when there are problems at work, you bring them to the altar. You bring them to the altar, then you pray on them, the Lord will hear. But you know what, I want to conclude this, I say this morning that with a charge. There is no point in having a rededicated building with people who are not rededicated. When we were in the UK, we saw many, many cathedrals, they were empty. In fact, they turned the cathedral to a bar, a restaurant. What happened? The children did not step off, the youth did not step off. I challenge you, young people, step off. This place shall not be a bar. This place will never be resold again. We take possession because the Lord has won this for us, the Lord has given us this, but we younger generation. We need to step up. Adults, we need to rededicate our lives, this is a day of rededication, not just only of this building, but of ourselves. You know what happened, uh, uh, December thirty-one, I think twenty twenty-three, we were in a watch night service. And the Lord was talking to me, you need to rededicate your life. I didn't know what was coming, it was so heavy. I went to that watch night service and one song broke me down, take my life and let it be. Consecrate a lot today, take my moment and my day, let them flow in seasons freeze. I began to pray, I began to seek the Lord, I began to rededicate my life, I was reanointed. We got, my wife said, something happened to you tonight. She said, the way you were praying, you were lost in the spirit. The way you were praying, you were asking for the Lord's will, the way you were saying, you were saying, wherever he leads, I'll go. You're faithful. God wants us to be lost in this feeling, God wants us to be, to rededicate our life. Five months later, I got an email from Brother Daryl, he said, I need to see you. See me for what? I need to see you about the future of our church. I'm not a board member, talk to Brother Bob, please, go talk to Brother Bob, talk to Brother Bill, please, please. I tried to stop him from coming, he said, no. I said, okay, whatever if I fly there, no, whatever if I drive there, I didn't know what he was going to talk about. He probably knew that if I drive there, I would not be able to drive back home. At the end of the day, he said, I have to come. He drove into Pullman, poor little town, colored town. Dropped his bag, said, let us go out on a, on a drive, just only you and I. On a drive, he gave me a letter, said that for twenty-four years I have freed. You are the man. But God reminded me of that re-consecration, of that rededication. The Bible says, who is willing this morning to consecrate his service unto the Lord? And I will read this and invite you to come and pray, some people gave their lives for this church. This church, apostolic faith church and this building, you may not know nineteen sixteen. In fact, it was nineteen twelve, Sister Klein was uh, uh, there, uh, started the work uh, there. Uh, and then um, uh, they, they came, it was in Muffin's Borough, I think nineteen twelve, in Muffin's Borough. Then in nineteen sixteen, uh, nineteen fifteen, Sister Klein, who was from the revival in Los Angeles. Then said, okay, she needed to return back home. Then nineteen sixteen, Portland sent Brother Alan Crabtree to come and be the pastor. Well, I mean, to come, to come here, he found work to come and help the work. Then Sister Thornton, who was the pastor, then brought the group from Muffin's Borough to Saint Louis as far as nineteen sixteen. They started in Saint Louis here, then nineteen eighteen, Brother Alan Crabtree took over as the pastor. They rented a few places and I, when I read in the history book, it says, he took over as pastor and moved the meetings to Franklin Street and Denmark Street. After that, he rented a different storehouse every few months. His purpose in regularly changing the meeting location was to reach as many people as possible. His purpose in regularly changing the meeting location was to reach as many people as possible. That's our church. We re-dedicate this house as a house of outreach. We will no longer do, we, we, we will not say, oh, let's just maintain few numbers. We will launch out. We will launch out into the day. By the grace of God, we win St. Louis. St. Louis for Christ. Are you on board? St. Louis for Christ. They did that and you know, beautiful story here about, about the walk up until nineteen eighty-one. Nineteen eighty-one, Brother Emma Luca became the pastor. And then he had to go back to Portland to build the, you know, the church across the road. Brother Emma was part of those who built that, Brother Nolan and Co. And then that nineteen eighty-two, when he left, Brother Tom Priestgate became the pastor from nineteen eighty-two to nineteen ninety-two. Brother Alan Martis from nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-seven. And then uh, brother, and it was during Brother Lemati that this was dedicated. Brother Larry Montgomery was pastor of St. Louis from ninety-seven to two thousand and two. Brother Kobe Thompson from two thousand and two to two thousand and seven. Brother Mark Wattington from two thousand and seven to two thousand and seventeen. Brother Joshua Idou from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-four. And then Brother Jeff Downey assumed the pastorate now, under whose watch we are re-dedicating this building. You know, let me just conclude this morning by saying that all of these people re-dedicated their lives. The charge this morning is who is willing? There are many pastors in the Midwest, it drove. I told you, they would drive, bring people here. What are you willing to do for God? What are you willing to give this money? Are you willing to say, Lord, take my life and let it be consecrated Lord today? Take my moment and my day. Out of all the people that have come and gone, there's one person who was here when the framing was done of this church. You know, we built this house as a, this house of God as a church initially. We did not buy this, it was built from scratch. That person was here when it was built from scratch. His name is Brother Bunnyface Uzendu. He will come forward and give the dedicatori, re-dedicatory prayer now. He walked on this building. It's another example. You know, every church needs an elder. Pastors may come, pastors may go, but those elders remain. They might not be pastors, but they are faithful. They are supporting their pastors. They are lifting their pastors. Brother Chendu, may God bless you. Come forward this morning, come and pray the re-dedicatory prayer. May the glory of the Lord come down. May the blessings of the Lord come down. May God, will you come and re-dedicate your lives after the dedicatori prayer? May God, will you come and rededicate your lives after the dedicatori prayer? Bless you, Brother Boniface. Let us pray. Ethanol and must, Holy God, the faithful, the true, the everlasting Father, the Creator of the heavens and the earth. We worship you this morning. We give glory to your name for you've been a faithful God. You've been a witness to yourself that your word is true. We've been a witness to yourself that there is nothing too hard for God to do. We thank you this morning. Thank you for the rededication of this house. Thank you for the souls that worked here. I want to acknowledge Brother Paul Weaver, who led part of the walk, did a mighty walk here. May you bless him and his life. Thank you for everyone that is here, Brother Solomon and the rest of them, who were here when this thing happened. And Lord, we've dedicated this place to your place. That you will hear prayer, that you answer prayer, that you will bless this house, that you take the glory and the honor to yourself. We love you, Lord. We want to do your will. Give us the grace, give us the strength, give us the enabling to be your people. And we're looking for that great day. When the saints go marching, Lord, we want to be in the number. Help us, oh God, we pray, in Jesus' name.